Hello. Okay, we are live, it says on there. Happy Tuesday. I'm gonna open up the committee meeting. You've got the agenda on your desks. A couple of topics that I put on here, based on previous meetings and stuff like that. But we're gonna start with an update from Marshall Sterling on the agenda. And it's Resolution 186 to enter into contract with Anthem. And it's regarding retiree insurance. Retiree Medicare insurance, probably, and things like that. So I just asked that she could come in and talk to us about why they're suggesting we make the switch and what's going on with that, just so we can have a full idea. Because it is, it's an increase from our previous provider. But there's also a lot of reason for it. So you wanna come on up, Lisa?
Lisa Legano, Marshall Sterling. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Bless you.
It's my first time here. Very excited. Back just after we renewed the contract for the retirees, what we call the MAPD, the Medicare Advantage Plan, in January. Humana started announcing, and some of the local hospitals started announcing, the fact that they were in negotiations. And they were in various states of those negotiations. That what they were doing was a normal process that happens all the time between insurance companies and hospitals and doctors' offices. They often can take months. But after we started tracking the situation for the first month, it became clear that things were not going to necessarily work themselves out the way we would want them to in order to protect the retirees. So we went out and obtained quotes, or solicited quotes, I should say, received some back, and met with, met with the folks here at this office maybe four, almost four weeks ago now, to say, "It's probably time to pull the trigger and make a move." The several providers that are in negotiations with Humana right now are Nathan Lutauer, Albany Medical Center, Community Care Physicians, New York Oncology Hematology. So from those, and each one of those providers has contracts that will potentially term at a different date. Typically, if they're having negotiations and things are going well, people are staying at the table and talking, those dates will get bumped out and bumped out, bumped out, until they come to a resolution. But we have a couple of providers at this point, too. And Albany Med really being the biggest at this moment, saying they are not going to renew that contract with Humana. And so after the end of June, members, although they continue to use Albany Medical Center, Albany Medical Center would not submit claims on their behalf. Your plan is designed to allow your retirees to see any provider they want, whether they're in a network or out. We already have that protection built in. But what the providers can do is they can say, "Well, we might have to see them because we participate with Medicare. However, we're not gonna submit claims on their behalf anymore, and we're gonna request payment upfront." So a patient would potentially have to go to that provider, pay upfront, receive detailed receipts of what transpired, submit all of that to the insurance company, and wait for the claim to process. It takes us back to those of us who remember before the days of HMOs, when we all had indemnity plans multiple decades ago. It's similar to that. This population really should not have to deal with that delay, that worry, putting money out upfront. It just puts them in a precarious situation. And our concern, as well as the city's, was that we need to, we need to make sure that that doesn't happen. Now, it doesn't mean it can't happen again in the future with another carrier. But for right now, we are at the point where we're recommending that a move be made from Humana over to Anthem's Medicare Advantage Plan for 6-1. Albany Med, New York Oncology Hematology, Nathan Lutauer, none of the area hospitals are in negotiations with Anthem right now. And Anthem is, has always been called Empire Blue Cross. They are now Anthem. They're part of a multi-state Blues organization. That's becoming more of the norm. There were several providers, insurance companies that we went to, to talk to about this, that offered proposals. But we felt that Anthem really met the needs for the largest population. The number one, the premiums are, although they are higher, Humana's premiums are far, far lower than anyone else's. And that's probably part of the problem that's going on. Okay? Because their premiums are so low, the hospitals and doctors are trying to negotiate for more money, which is gonna force the premiums up, right? It's which side of the scale do you put the dollars on? So all of the carriers were more expensive. But Anthem provides a vast network. They have done this for quite a long time. They had a reasonable premium for us. So it's an increase in premium and cost, you know, to the city. But it's manageable. We had actually negotiated a quite aggressive renewal with Humana to begin with. So even by having this increase, by moving at this juncture over to Anthem, it's not nearly what it would have been if a move had been made earlier. The, as far as the members are concerned, the benefits will remain the same. Medicare Advantage Plans follow strict guidelines from CMS as far as customer service, implementation, the plan design themselves. So there were two plans that were being offered now that will continue to be offered. And it all depends on where someone retired from as to what to plan thereon. There's either a zero copay plan or what we call a base copay plan, which has $10 or $20 or $30 copays for certain things. That's just for the medical, okay? The prescription plan that has been self-funded and administered through ARIA is remaining the same. There is no change to the prescription coverage for the retirees. It is strictly with respect to the base medical plan that's, that would move over to Anthem. So we are in the midst of implementing right now to have everything in order. There are strict timelines that also have to be complied with from a CMS perspective. And the process will be seamless for the retirees. They will be auto-enrolled in the new plan unless we hear otherwise. They've already been notified that there is a change coming down the pipe and why, so that they can maintain access and ease of use to all of the providers that they're used to using now. We should have ID cards in members' hands almost 30 days prior to the effective date. They'll have plan booklets in hand within the next couple of weeks. Those are already gonna be mailed out to members' homes. And I have samples of those with me today if anybody wanted to see those or take a look. You know, group numbers have been assigned. Everything is moving along really smoothly. So it does, it does represent a slight increase in costs for the city. But it is the right, it's the right move for the retirees. So they are not avoiding care or...
Putting money upfront.
Putting money upfront, being put in hardship, trying to decide whether to go and see a doctor or not. The biggest, the biggest impact was related to, initially, we thought Nathan Lutauer might be the biggest issue because it's so, it's the closest to home technically. But we would have four, over 40 of the retirees who would be impacted by Albany Med's decision.
Yeah, it was a large number.
Yeah.
Initially, when it started, we were told that it was like ESPN arguing with Spectrum.
Yeah.
And...
Usually it's.
Usually it is.
Yeah, usually it is.
And this wasn't the case.
Is this the first time you've seen it not really work out in a while? Or?
Well, if we still haven't gotten to the date yet.
True.
Right? In, in 30-plus years of doing this work, I've seen it happen once downstate. Where impacted clients of ours haven't seen it happen upstate.
And typically, it, like...
I'm trying to think of what.
So, yeah, like this is basically getting to a point where you're like, this very well could not work out.
It could, it's, it's possible.
You don't always say, like, jump ship to your clients.
No, no.
You rarely say that.
One of the biggest, one of the biggest things we have to be aware of with this type of a plan versus one that we would offer to the active employees is the CMS guidelines.
True. Which is the standard for Medicare, Medicaid services.
That is correct. So there has to be X number of days to notify people of changes, X number of days for implementation, so no one can be surprised. So it almost, it's there, it is there to protect people, but it forced us to kind of pull the trigger a little bit earlier than we would have if it was a non-Medicare plan.
Okay.
And because, because of the number of entities that are still out there and having these talks all at the same time with Humana, it, it feels a bit different than it has before. Albany Med taking the stance that they will not see people, even when technically they should be, but they're going to make it so difficult that they're not going to see people, is, is a little bit more intense than we've ever seen before. So, you know, I still have hopes that it could change, but we can't leave it to the last minute for this group. I've been taking phone calls and emails from a lot of the retirees, gotten to know them really well from the past couple of months. It's really been, I mean, although I hate the fact that they're going through some uncertainty, it's been great to get to know them.
Can I say this as a retiree? I had Humana, and I had, I had a change. Well, from everything that you're saying tonight?
Yeah.
It's true. Because out in the medical field, and I just had my knee done, and I had Humana. And they said if we went to another hospital, it might have been a different cost. So we changed over.
Any other questions?
Do they contribute, do retirees contribute?
Say it again.
Do they contribute to their coverage?
Some retire, going forward, they do, yes, they do.
Depends on the contract.
Most of them currently do.
It's all contracts.
Just because of the contracts that they retired under.
Yeah.
Thank you so much for coming and explaining that.
You're welcome.
That was really helpful. Does anyone else have?
Should I leave any materials or no?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll take some.
Okay.
Lynn got some today. I don't know if she can have them there for you. Drop one off in my office.
She probably got, these are the booklets that are going, she got them, they're arriving at members' homes now as well. That's good. Okay. And if anyone has any questions after the fact, Kim and Lynn and Louise and the mayor know. Where to find me? There's that. I'll give you this too. There's a copy of the ID cards too.
So someone had a question, so that'll have, that's not your group number and everything.
That's my group number.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, the next item on here is finalizing department head reports. And I put "finalizing" because I really would like to get this worked out. And I talked to Irene yesterday. We had a big discussion about it and some of her questions and kind of rebranding it a little. Not, not rebranding it, but just making sure that everyone knows that it's coming from a place of, like, just wanting to open the door a little more to the department heads as opposed to, like, keeping an eye on the department heads. Like, those are two different things. And in my, in my previous Schenectady County, we called public participation "the privilege of the floor" and that the, the public had the privilege of the floor at our meeting. And then the floor belonged to the council, to the legislature, whatever. And so I kind of think of it as, like, the privilege of the floor to the department heads. Like, here's your chance to take the floor and talk to us about anything you want to talk to us. And usually, like, the highlight reel, like, what's going great? What do you, what do you have coming up? What can we be helpful with? And, and things like that. So that's what I'd really like it to feel like and not like a book report of what you did on your summer vacation or, or a report, because I'm the area report card on. And so I do really want to hear everybody's concerns about it. And I understand that not everybody can come in person and that perhaps even just having a write-up from some of the department heads once in a while. We were talking about the assessor. I said, "Irene, I don't even know what the assessor's report would say." And she listed off a whole bunch of things that the assessor's report might say. I'm like, "Well, that would be really cool to know." And that's what I'm looking for here. Like, what would it be really cool for us to know? What would it be great to tell our constituents? You know, what do you, what do you need our constituents to know? Like, we were talking about the assessor and, like, the senior star exemption. Like, what is the biggest stress on our seniors? Taxes. And, you know, what are, are they utilizing all of the tax incentives that we have for seniors and veterans and things in the community? And the assessor can tell us that. And he can say, "Oh, yeah, everyone's got it. That qualifies for, it's great." Or, "Hey, I haven't been able to reach this, this group of people." Like, that's the kind of stuff I feel like I would like to know and what I would like to open it up to. But I would like to hear your concerns, especially if your concerns about it being too heavy-handed or, or executive-level, you know, stuff. You know, I think looking at it from a, you know, we're here to legislate. And how can we, you know, help legislate better by knowing better what's going on, what the hopes and needs are? So please, Scott.
Why not hear from a department head? And his take on it.
That's a way to put someone right on the spot.
Sorry, there you go. Am I missing something that I should have, from me? Was it sent to me?
No, it was not sent to you. But we've been talking about having, like, department heads come and speak, monthly, quarterly.
No, I'm not familiar with the whole background. I thought there was, like, you had a list of something.
Oh, yeah.
It's just one we've been kind of working on above. So, yeah, so he's like, I don't know. Curse is a little pretty on the spot.
No, I just think that if, you know, we're talking about it, there's a department head right here. I'd like to hear his thoughts on it. It's not a report card, it's sharing of information. You're all good with that, coming in and talking about it or sending it?
Certain things I'm good with, other things I don't. It's difficult considering the aspects of it. I can give you overviews of the departments. But if it's gonna be, I don't want to get into specifics of any single cases, either on the fire side or the code enforcement side.
It's not gonna be detailed details, just like, "We have code enforcement, and this is what they do. This is what they're responsible to do, to go around when people call in." What, what?
That's a one-time thing. Like, once I give, once I give the overview of it, if you want me to come back and talk about it, then what am I doing the next time?
Well, but also, I think, like, with codes, monthly, if you were telling us monthly or quarterly, like, these are the types of, this is the most common code violation that we're getting right now. And we are having a big problem with people, like, leaving garbage on the street. Or we're having a big problem with, you know, people not getting their plumbing permits. I don't know, like, whatever it is. And just that, that type of thing are what people are calling in about, so we know what's happening in our neighborhoods. And, you know, I would say things like that. Like, that type of data is helpful. But certainly, yeah, we should not be asking you, like, "What happened at X number of streets at this time?" Yeah, that's a complete violation, yeah. Or right now, what the codes office is trying to do is increase awareness, the people that they have to get electrical permits because they're gonna burn their houses down, whatever it is.
I can sum up codes very quickly. Where your codes in the city of Amsterdam are reactionary. We respond to complaints. We don't have the staff for the time to go out and investigate and try to be proactive in anything of education. We do what we can with the handouts and things they have. I can tell you that, let's see, today, April 2nd, right now, we're trailing off and probably gonna have a lot of garbage complaints for the way yards look and stuff like that. Give me three months, the biggest complaint will be vegetation. And then, once that dries out, then, you know, once we get late August, then the vegetation complaints will slow down. And then we'll get into the winter, and we'll have snow complaints. And, you know, things, things of that nature. That's, that doesn't change year to year. Code enforcement, it's really not necessarily code enforcement, but, you know, some of the interesting numbers. I know that the mayor, Michelle, compiled some statistics of...
Sure. I don't want to interrupt you.
...have been fixed up in the last year and stuff like that. That's not necessarily some information that comes from code enforcement, that, you know, that comes from Michelle or the property disposition of, like, "Okay, in the last two years, we have had this many units of houses back on the tax road or back available for people to wreck because we are in the middle of a housing crisis," as you guys know. You know, so things like that. There's not a lot of things that change, like, I'm gonna be coming back every two months or every other month. That, so it depends on what you're looking for.
Well, and it would, it could, does not be a long presentation. But, yeah, just a, a little bit, a couple of months of, yeah, a couple of sentences, a couple of minutes of, of what's going on. I mean, our finances don't change that often either, but Louise gives us the update all the time.
Those are actual numbers. So a lot of the things with the codes, and they wind up in court, they drag them for six months, nine months. So you don't really get a lot of updates. So the end result of, you know, whatever your guys' pleasure is, is, you know, I'll prepare it for you. I just don't know, with a, with a broad overview of it and not having, like, specific questions, that's just my reactionary view.
And I, I communicate with the chief on a regular basis. You know, we have a list of priorities that we always talking about when we go down, you know, all the time. And the numbers, he's always reporting to me. We have incidents, we have ambulance revenues and things like that, very important numbers and measurements. And we stay on top of that on a regular basis. So, but as you said, with codes, it's, it's a, you know, I react.
It's different. I mean, you know, I can spit numbers and statistics via the fire department end of it. Code enforcement is gonna be just a little bit of a different animal, as I'm sure engineering would be different, but fire and police would be to codes, you know?
Well, I hope in the, if you all read the letter, I was trying to put together, like... And I can read it, and then we can kind of go over what you might want it to say. "Dear department head, thank you for all the work that you do on behalf of the city of Amsterdam. While much of it goes unheralded, it is not going unnoticed. While most of you prefer to stay out of the spotlight, we'd like to give you the floor. We're opening up the communication and presentations portion of the agenda at the second meeting of the month for the departments to give us an update. This means different things to different departments. And you, as the department head, really have the freedom to share with us what you think is important for us to know. These would be brief and conversational, focusing on the highlights and what we should know for the future. It will give the council and the public a chance to get to know your department better and hopefully open up for collaborations and shared ideas." And so I wouldn't even, like, make it a hard and fast, like, "You have to come every month to people." And I'd be certainly open to department heads saying they want, you know, I, I really would prefer, like, just to send you guys a memo every quarter, or I'd really prefer to, you know, I do want to come every month and tell you things, you know, for everything from, like, the super detailed, like, that we get from Mike Clark to maybe just a very general, like, "This is what's going on," you know, rundown of, of things. So every, it does look different for everything. We're not gonna, like, you know, Scott Warren's not gonna come in December to talk to him at the golf course, like, both types of things. But, and I, and I'm open to, like, letting it be what people would like it to be, but I don't want it to be, like, totally voluntary. Like, I do think that I'd like to hear from the department heads that we don't see regularly, like, once in a while.
You have a department head every, department head meeting every two weeks, right?
I do.
So would it help for an overview from their department head meeting to inform us on the things that they're discussing that they feel comfortable enough to share?
None of this is saying that the mayor doesn't meet with his department heads.
I'm talking about from a communication.
This is for them communicating with, with, having a chance to communicate with us. And that can be restrictive to, like, five different people that they would have to communicate with separately or not have the opportunity. This just gives them the chance to come here and communicate with us and for us to communicate with them. And everybody hear the same thing. Nothing to do with whether the mayor keeps track of what's going on or not. Like, that, that's not the intent here.
Again, I think the opportunity is here to create something. It's gonna take a while, I think, to filter out and figure out what it's gonna be for each department, because each department is different. But, you know, at the department head meeting scale, I do go through the priorities for each department. So there isn't, there is the opportunity for me to present to you my agenda for the department head meetings and, you know, sort of like a synopsis for what each department head is working on and use that as a guide. I don't know. Because that's gonna be the struggle of this, is, is each department is a little bit different, each department head is a little bit different. So there's not gonna be a consistency.
It doesn't have, yeah, there doesn't have to be.
Our auditors just issued our final financial statement audit report. They are offering to come and present it on August or April 16th is our next meeting. I just wanted to get back to them, let them know if, if that's something that you want them to do.
The auditor's gonna come in and give us an, yeah, they do that every year. Yeah, definitely.
They didn't come last year, but they should come every year.
They should come every year.
We just got it, like, literally hot off the press last week. So we're just trying to get that scheduled now, so.
So that would be a good, a good example of, you know, what the, what the controllers, one of the sessions for a controller's report. It doesn't have to be the same thing every month. It could be a special project, things like that.
Are we okay to add that to the next agenda?
Yes.
Yes, that's a layers agenda. I've lost the yard.
It would seem to me that the most appropriate place for the auditors to present during the session would be during the meeting at the section of the meeting for presentations, which is section, uh...
Yeah, we talked about that. On the agenda.
We will have the report before the meeting.
Section six. What did you say, Irene?
We will have the report before the meeting, yeah.
Yes.
I just had to do the corrective action plan. I just finished that. I'm gonna send them both to, send them to Stephanie, I guess, right? And to distribute ahead of time.
Right.
You still need a representative from our system? Representative, yeah. Do we still need her? No, you can leave if you'd like.
Oh, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought she was...
Thank you.
But you're more than welcome to stay too.
Yes. Thanks for saying that. If they don't approve, if they don't approve it, I was waiting for one of us to say that. Anything else? Your, your, your...
I guess I just would like to know, it's kind of a straw poll of, like, do you guys support doing this or not? Because I say it and no one says anything.
I support communication always. I think it's important for, for everybody to communicate in order for us to know what we're doing so we can be more informative, so we can take it to our constituents, because we get asked questions all the time. And I, for one, don't want to be one of those people to say, "Let me get back to you, because I don't know." I'd like to know. And just to put it out there, like, do I need to know every ticket, the police department's writing, no, I don't, but. But it would, if they're working, you know, if if they wanna come in and talk about, um, you know, crime is up, crime is down, that kind of stuff. I think it's pertinent information, that's the basics that we get asked all the time, um, JJ wants to to give that kind of information out, I think it's great. I I, the only thing that I see is that I think it could be kind of redundant for them, because they're giving. Their updates to the mayor every two weeks and, you know, I. They could shrink it to a more condensed version for us, um, so it's easier on their schedules and it's easier on the clock here. But I'm in favor of communication all the time, I I would like a sponge, I wanna learn as much as I can learn.
So what would, what would you say the best way to do it there would be?
I I if they wanna, I think you leave it up to their schedules, I mean, if if they wanna come in and do a little short presentation or if they wanna write a memo. Or or if Mike wants to give an update. Well, I think that's the challenge, is that you have so many people involved, with so many different. There's logistic issues. You know, it's, they 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 need some, they need some guidance in terms of what we're expecting and. It doesn't sound like we know what we're expecting at this point in time, as a as a body. And so they're, you know, they're they're wondering, you know, what do you want us to talk about? And I think that we need to give that some thought, give them some suggestions, let them think about it and and let them decide, you know. What what would mean, what would make sense for the council, what would make sense for them, um. But I I think that's the, that's the struggle, is that everybody's got different ideas about, you know, or don't don't have any ideas about what what to expect. And I understand that, you know, you you have a department head meeting, we have an agenda, we go through it department by department. We discuss uh the priorities of each department, we discuss how the departments can work together to solve certain problems. We know what we're gonna do when we go in there, I think that's the only thing missing here, Kel, is that we need to define what we want. And I don't think the council's ready to define that at this point, but it's something I think you should work on, I do think communication. And and, you know, information is key and the more you understand about these issues, the better the better council members are gonna be. Different council members have different ways of gathering information, um, they have different, you know, personalities, they have different, you know, different time schedules. So it's it's, everything is different and it's not, you know. So that's the challenge, but I think you keep working at it and trying to come up with something that um is pleasing to the council and to the department. As that fits within each person's, each person's style, personality, jobs, you know, I think I I think we can make that work, but it's gonna take some time and some. Some real effort. And I think that's your point, right? You're looking for preliminary ideas so we can put something like that.
I've been looking for that for two months, three months now, March, April. I mean, I, this is not a new thing that I keep bringing up, so what I will do, I will call everybody individually and see what we can uh work out and talk about.
Why don't you start with a, just an email to the uh to the department heads? And ask them, you know, if we called you in front of the council, what sort of information would you present? And then share that with the council and see what the council thinks about that, and that way. You know, you'll have something kind of great to look at.
Sure, and if that's okay with you, I mean, that would not be something I would just do without.
No, I'm suggesting, as as a council, you have a right to to talk to, you know, to communicate with the department heads. And I'm saying get their ideas, as to what they feel is is practical, feasible for them to do. It's not gonna be every week, as you pointed out here, um, but but again, that's what I would suggest, get their opinions first. See what they think and then and then share that with the council and um.
Okay.
Let me, let me give you my take on this, I like the fact that we meet like from five thirty to six is like a catch out. If you wanna bring in Director Vado, we bring him in, if you wanna talk to the chief, we take him from this phone and put him up there. It could be a last minute thing, it could be something that we need answered uh in in during the week, let's say. It could be, it could be, something could be coming up right now, like the roads program, so you get a department head at this time right now, at six. From five thirty to six, let him talk about something that's coming up right now, cause sometimes you can bring somebody up and talk about what they're doing. That's not really relevant to what we're doing right now, but it is important, don't get me wrong, but I like the fact that. Like you, like we did tonight, see, you brought someone in, we have a block between five thirty and six. And brought someone in, we talked about the insurance, why? Because it's something that has to do with the resolutions on the agenda tonight. And if we didn't have that, we'd be asking questions like, well, what about this, and what about that, and this way you can bring this person in to talk. I like that idea.
I guess the, just give you a little bit more from a department head standpoint. Um, not saying this is correct, but the way I look at it is, I look. I inform you guys and involve you guys of anything that's gonna need a resolution from you or any budgetary issues. Because you're the ones who crafted the budget and put the things to line, so if I have something that's gonna need a transfer or anything. Is where I come to you guys as a a body, usually with a sponsored resolution that I'm ready to speak of. It seems like you want a little bit more than that or something a little different than that, am I accurate there or no?
Yeah, I think, um, you know, we're in crafting a budget too, like. More understanding we have about what your department has and needs, especially now that we're coming into an era of maybe like not. Contingency budget, you know, not like, like scared budgeting anymore, like we might have some more room, like it would, it'll help like direct things. Yeah, and 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 to know, um, you know, when I, we've had this community meetings, the different neighborhoods. Getting facts about like, you know, when the neighbors say like, you know, nothing ever happened, you know, all these bad things are happening, our neighbor who never call. And, um, you know, there, the 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 police department says, well, we've only gotten four calls from you, you know, like, okay, like that's really, like that kind of information is not like. We're getting a lot of calls from this neighborhood, we're getting a lot of, you know, vagrancy of kids right now, or truancy of kids, not vagrancy. Um, things like that, like, I don't know, just just an idea of like the pulse of what's going on in the city from all the different departments. Um, and then also what we hear too, um. So it it it's not, it it's also meant to kind of bring more comfortability with with communicating with us too, there's been years of. Like other council members that have been very difficult to to deal with and have been very hard on our employees and our department heads. And, you know, we don't wanna do that anymore, um, I don't wanna do that anymore, and I, all five people here, I know, don't wanna do that. Um, and so instead of feeling like you're coming in from a firing squad that once or twice you come here. Come more often.
But I would not permit that to happen, Kel, I wouldn't let the department heads be abused by the council.
Sure, oh, I know, but they they have been, so they're nervous about, I I can understand some people's nervousness from.
Yeah.
They're pre, they've been here a long time.
I guess it's not fair either for just me to wait, cause I'm at every meeting, so I I see you guys every every two weeks and, you know, I've. Hopefully I have a communication meeting every one of you, um, so you're not just talking about, you know, the three department heads in this room for four.
No.
And this review back about all of the other ones too.
Kel, I need to talk on this one because.
Yeah, I do wanna move on to the next, yeah, the parking one.
I wanna know where we, I wanna know where we stand on this. Last week we tabled it and we were discussing, so.
I'd love to throw it, yeah.
Right.
I did not have my conversation yet with the downtown um Sentinel about their parking lot, but we did change the.
There's no need to act on it.
We did change the, uh, Tony, what did we do?
Let me tee it up, if I may, under old business, you have the table ordinance from the last meeting. Which we've already had a public hearing on, and if you're so inclined, you could vote to ratify that ordinance tonight.
It's been the, I mean, that's the one up on the hill, right, the park.
Correct.
Yeah, this is.
No.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, well, I'm not, okay.
Are we talking about this here?
No, I'm talking about downtown.
The only thing. My understanding is the only thing we tabled was downtown.
The downtown part.
Tap is done, right? Everything else passed?
Right, yeah, we tabled the the main street.
That's what I'm talking about right now.
Yes, so under old business, what I was saying, is under old business, you have the tabled resolution. From the last meeting, which we've already had the public hearing on, and if you're inclined to vote on that ordinance tonight, you can. You also have for introduction, a new ordinance. The new ordinance is almost the same as the one that's under old business, except. That it contemplates the parking being for fifteen minutes uh for uh Sunday through. Uh, Monday through Sunday, uh, the first resolution, the tabled resolution contemplates Monday through Friday. So that's the difference between the tabled resol, tabled ordinance and the one that we introduced.
You include the weekends.
Yes.
Yes, for the fifteen minute spots.
In the new one.
Yeah, that's it.
So you have two choices.
Oh, no, no, we got sixteen minute parking on the south side, eight AM through five, yeah, Monday through Friday, you didn't change that.
Correct.
Okay, so you only changed the fifteen minute ones, Monday through Friday, you added.
Changed it to Monday through Sunday.
Um, I watched the meeting, um, I'm sorry, I was not here for it, and it was, it was, like. Actually kind of glad that I couldn't say anything, cause then I like had time to think about it, cause you know, I talk before I think sometimes, um. And I, I'd like to like take a step back from all of this and look at what is good parking policy in communities. Like universally, like, you know, this is something like that people study, that planners design and things like that. I park in a lot of cities around here, um, and, you know, there's the ones with the paid parking, which is not the direction, right? And the ones that don't have paid parking, I tend to see two hour timeframes, and I'm thinking about it being both reasonable for the person. Parking and reasonable for enforcement, and then thinking about these parking spaces as how fluid. Like, we wanna get people moving through the downtown, that's why we did the whole redirectional plan, we spent millions of dollars making people drive through downtown. And these parking spaces are the same as a table at a restaurant, we gotta turn them over so that new people can come in and spend money. And we also need people to be able, if if you can never get at a reservation, never get a table at a restaurant, you're gonna stop going back, if you can never get parking, you're gonna stop going back. So I like, and it has to be simple, like Albany is so complicated, that if you find a parking spot in Albany. It's probably cause you're gonna get a ticket there, like, it's it's, you know, Monday morning, you can't do this, Tuesday afternoon, you can't do that, Wednesday, you have to park backwards. Like, it's nuts, um, in front of my office and 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 when, in Albany, so it needs to be like simple. Like, cause we don't have parking enforcement yet, um, so I'm thinking of of something that's like just general two hours. All around, I understand that people, we do, there's a desire for those fifteen minute parking spaces. And I think that's important too, to be flexible in the future for the different businesses, um. And so I'm thinking like, what if we put fifteen minute parking in the spots on the ends, like, there's probably handicap parking and then a fifteen minute spot. A fifteen minute spot, one or two, depending on what we might think the need could be. It's easy to monitor, cause like as the police are driving by, if that same Honda Civic is sitting there for an hour, it's easy to ticket that. But it doesn't necessarily belong to anyone, because parking spots don't belong to anyone. Parking spot in front of my house does not belong to me, and my neighbor is allowed to park in front of my house every single night, even if they have a driveway. And sometimes they do, other neighbors have, like, so as long as they're following the parking laws, you don't, you don't own the spot in front of you. But we could make some flexible parking spaces like that, that could benefit any business down there, depending on, you know, whoever ends up renting that space. Um, so kind, like, I'd like to just see it like less complicated, I do think it needs to be seven days a week. Um, because weekends are important down there, um. And so I just, like, if we could look at what other communities do, what, you know, what the police chief has seen in other areas. But I think that would be valuable, that's my thought.
Uh, me and Dennis in my ward, who I do frequent down there often, I I don't think fifteen minutes is realistic, I really don't. And I, I know a lot of people who park there a lot longer than fifteen minutes and I'm not gonna, I I don't think we should be burdening. The police department to go down there and give tickets or patrol, I I'll just go, I'll meet you halfway, Kelly, I think it should be one, at least one hour parking. And uh, this would be one hour parking, that's it, and Monday through Friday, and so, and Monday through uh Sunday.
For all of that.
Look at, here's the idea, you want people downtown, and I think that's the idea of bringing downtown back to life again. And to have people go down there, go down, get out, go down, get out, that's not the, I think we're defeating the purpose. I think you want people to stay down there, so if they have to go from one store to another store, or they have to go. And uh wait for their computer to get fixed, or they wait for a pizza, or they're going over to the perish shop, or they're, or they're drinking beer over at Schulters. Or they're having something to eat at uh Cheese Cookies, or even going to H. R. Block, no one.
Well, I'm for that, but I'm just know that we're here for the business people, that they want that fifteen minute spot.
And there's, Mary.
And my initial response was no.
Spot, you got a pizza place that needs short term.
Yeah, I mean, my initial response was no, you can't have it, like, that's not how things work, but if we could make a compromise.
Forever, he's been there forever and he needs a fifteen minute parking spot, that's just, that's the nature of his business, we have. We have spots all over downtown.
Well, then you know what?
People can park.
But that's where my compromise comes in, it doesn't belong to him.
It doesn't belong to him, but we're trying to accommodate the pedestrians who go downtown to do business, we're not trying to accommodate his business. We're trying to make it easy for a person who wants a pizza to go get the pizza, that's what we're trying.
Right, so.
So it's not, not we're giving it to the business, but we're trying to reflect the nature of the business in our downtown. Albany, we can't compare to, we can't compare to.
That's probably not the part.
I'm not trying to.
Small enough where we can try and establish a per, a a policy which which permits pedestrians. To use the stores that we have downtown and and without, you know, without inconveniencing the pedestrians, I mean, that's that's to me what we're trying to do. And we do want people to walk more, we do want to take CDT and all those kinds of things.
Well, when I compare it to what that's connected to now Albany, but like to Saratoga or Johnstown, it's a two hour parking, but none of them would.
Saratoga is totally different than us, they have a lot more parking.
That is their parking ground, you still don't forget. That's not what I'm saying, I'm saying, like, this is what other parking looks like in the area, not like we're Saratoga, we're not like, it's two hours. They wouldn't give fifteen minutes to anybody, however, I think we could give fifteen minutes, I do think that's reasonable, in a couple of spots, I do know like.
That's what we've done with this policy.
Where?
We've got fifteen minute spots on the way, in front of the pizza place, we got fifteen minute spots on the other end of Main Street on that side of the street.
Right.
Those are the two spots we got fifteen minutes, everything else is.
In and out. Everything else is an hour.
Right. That's all we've done, in in response to, you know, the the type of traffic that's down there, the one thing I have not done yet. Is try and get people who are parking at the billiard lounge all day on Saturdays and Sundays. Uh, trying to get them a more, a a larger parking area, but again, I I think we're. I'll I'll keep my mouth shut, but that's what this policy is designed to be, right, chief, I mean.
I agree with the mayor, the first complaint we had about parking was from Riverside.
Right.
They were complaining that their customers couldn't come and pick up their their orders, so we first put a sign. Some time ago for fifteen minute parking in front of Riverside, now Lemon Cookies says that their customers can't come in and pick up their orders. Or whatever they need, quick customers in and out, so we're trying to please both ends of Main Street. And having fifteen minute parking for both Lemon Cookies store and Riverside, only a few spots, the rest of it is limited, as we said. I mean, this is something we've talked about with the business owners in the past, we understand the problem that's there, and that's what's suggested for.
So all you're doing is, you're adding weekends, that's all you're doing.
Right.
Fifteen minute spots.
You're leaving everything at fifteen minutes, the little areas, and I circled it from where it is, and it's only limited to stores, really. You know, you're talking fifteen minutes from the north side between two Main Street to ten Main Street.
Those are the number of spots that are there.
Yeah, they're not that many.
Plus, we are going to add more spots downtown, we're going to try changing the angle of the parking.
Okay, so you add, so what you did, you added weekends, right, and that's what, the one person that came here complained, that's what she wants. She wants it seven days a week, rather than the old ordinance reads Monday through Friday. The new ordinance reads Monday through Sunday, that's what she wanted. Okay, so there's a there's a person that came here, she spoke, that's what she wants.
And we, and again, the pizza place is open seven days.
Pizza place is open seven days.
You know, so they didn't come and speak, we reflected that.
Okay, I think we should just go with the one person that came here, she, this is her, and we're just experimenting, we'll see how it works.
My only concern is, it still says eight to five, Riverside Pizza, they're busy after five o'clock.
That would change.
That doesn't true. That doesn't address the issue they have.
Eight to five?
When you're open till what, Riverside Pizza?
Right.
Riverside Pizza's open at one, chief.
I'm not sure, but I would tell at least nine o'clock.
There's nobody down there at night. I'm just kidding, this will drive you nuts.
It's gonna be after five. It's gonna be after five.
Okay, well, I think we're ready to walk inside away.
I, I'd like to say.
Thank you.
My request would be that things like this get brought to us before they're written up as local laws.
We did. We, we had a discussion about this.
When?
Before, we made a local law on it.
And we had a public hearing.
And then we had a public hearing.
We did.
You brought a local law?
I bought it, I handed out a whole list of things about parking downtown, I sent it to all the council members, and we talked about it.
At, at the same, at the local law.
We repeated the death lesson, that's why we came up with it, Kelly.
But again.
No, but that's, like, the local law's already written, like, we could be talking about these things before we write a local law and then have to have a public hearing, like the.
Kelly, I sent out a list, didn't you get the list of the things I sent for every issue of downtown, the parking issues?
Yeah, and then.
And then you talked about it here?
We discussed it.
When?
And they had, Mayor had, we had a discussion.
I told you.
The mayor had a meeting with Mr. Flint.
I gave it to you two weeks.
And the police chief, they discussed it, they went down, they came back with this idea.
Well, then that, that is, that is my mistake, but I like.
They came back with this idea.
It, it's not an easy issue, there's no, there's no question, everybody has their own ideas.
But then we should just try it.
But I, I did think that we had taken away the nine to five thing for fifteen minutes.
We, we didn't change the fifteen minutes.
The only.
No, we didn't change, you added the weekend, that's all you did.
That's right.
And that's what, that's what Mrs. Flint wanted, she wanted it on weekends. Everything else was fine.
Okay, that's the only change in the two orders.
That's the only change we did, so.
If I could just mention to you guys, because it's a group of people we haven't heard from yet, uh, pretty good, we always want to.
OTB.
Not only OTB, if you have a bunch of residential to bug those storefronts out, and you gotta be sixteen to twenty down there, and there's more coming.
That's why we had a public hearing. That's why, that's why we had a public hearing. And one person showed up for the public hearing.
Right, and those people cannot, those tenants cannot park in all those spaces all day long, they can't. And that's what.
And those are, and those are hurt tenants, just so you know, those are hurt tenants. They are.
I tried to take the.
Just so you know, those are hurt.
Another thing, I don't want to legislate based on reactively to a couple complaints.
Right.
I want to look at it holistically.
Right.
I said that about Clisby Avenue and What a Bargain, I'm saying about this, and this doesn't feel holistic, it feels based on what will make a couple people happy.
It takes time and attention to, to get it right, there's no question about it. And I've given it about as much time and attention as I have to give to it, and I think that's what we came up with. We did have a, a really good, uh, you know, I thought we made the change, I guess we didn't. I have no problem tabling this and, or coming up with a, not voting on this, whatever you guys want to do, and making the change that, uh, that what was it, nine to five, nine to five, we're gonna make it forever, the fifteen minute parking?
You're gonna do it till nine at night?
Nine to nine.
Riverside at least.
Yeah, and then the, the reason being nine to five is that tenants who live there can then park their cars on the street from five until the next morning. Then they have to get in their car and they have to go to work, or they have to get in their car and drive it someplace else. So that those part, those spaces are free for, for businesses, that's what that was about, that's why we used nine to five, nine to five. And fifteen minute spots, making those only available nine to five doesn't make sense, right? They should have been nine to nine, Tony, I should have told you that, they did though.
Just to be clear though, you're saying nine to five, it's eight to five.
Eight to five, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So, if I may.
Go ahead, sir.
For tonight, guys, here's what I would advise, okay? First, under Old Business, you have the ordinance, the first ordinance. I would advise you do one of two things, either pass it or vote it down tonight, okay? Then, on the one that's on for introduction.
Have a public hearing.
Uh, if you're inclined to move forward from this point in time with what's been drafted, schedule a public hearing. If you're not inclined, if the majority of you think that we're not ready to schedule a public hearing on it, then I would advise that a motion to withdraw the new ordinance be made, that way it doesn't automatically come back, uh, and then we can just hit the reset button on this.
One question I have is, can we change what you've got there?
No, not tonight.
The proposed one?
We can't change it and schedule a public hearing on it tonight, no, we have to introduce it in final form.
Okay, and that's what we were gonna do tonight, that's right. So we can't change it, we're gonna introduce it in final form.
You want to change.
We could take a recess.
Can I ask something? You want to change, out of all this, you want to change from eight AM to nine PM?
For the fifteen minute spots, right Chief?
Correct.
That's it, that's all you want to change? You want the latest, two weeks for that?
Well, Jim, this is, it's not a resolution, it's an ordinance.
Right.
So it's been drafted as an introduction of, of Ordinance C to be known as Ordinance Three if adopted. If we're gonna change the parking from being eight AM through five PM to being eight AM through nine PM, then that's going to require a change to the ordinance. And we can't schedule a public hearing on that before we introduce that new ordinance, we have to introduce it. It's not the same as a resolution, where you just say, let's, let's make a motion to amend it.
Monday through Friday, it's open till five o'clock.
So we could do a special meeting and introduce it.
It's open all night for weekends.
So we can't make that change on this one, before we even introduce it, because we haven't introduced it.
We haven't started our common council yet, right? So we could take a recess, I could make the amendment that you want, whatever that amendments may be. And then we could make a motion to, uh, introduce this, to amend the agenda.
Okay, because it's already on our agenda, yeah, I got it, I got it.
Before you do that, because we haven't started a meeting yet, let me tell you a few about this.
I mean, I do have a question regarding whether or not it would be a good idea, but I think Kelly kind of answered it in saying that these parking spots don't belong to the businesses. I see in some places, for example, we use Cheese Cookies, parking for Cheese Cookies only. I mean, if that would help, I don't know, I'm not trying to throw out new ideas, I think what we have here is decent enough, especially now that you're looking at eight to nine PM and seven days a week, I feel like that makes it pretty flush for everybody. And the one hour seems fine, but, yeah. Is there anything against parking for Cheese Cookies only, for example, two or three spots?
You can't do that on a public street, you could do that on a private parking lot, I figured do that on a public street.
So right now, if we could recess, Tony, we recess and we go Monday through what, Friday? Not, and I had, instead of being eight AM to five, it's gonna be eight AM to nine, no weekends. I believe that's what you're talking?
You lost me at the no weekends part.
Well, that's what it says, it says in the, in the new one.
I think you're changing it to seven days a week, right?
It says seven days a week.
So I would think that we're only gonna be, if I'm foul, guys.
Well, tell me what you're changing, you're the one that brought this up.
Sounds like what we'd be changing is under the legislative intent, number one, uh, you'd be going from, at the end, from eight AM through nine PM. Then at number two, same change, you'd be going from eight AM through nine PM. Uh, now, the question I have is for number three, with the sixty minute parking, is that also going to be eight AM through nine PM? Or is that going to remain eight AM through five PM? What's your pleasure?
It's eight AM through five PM.
Leave the last one to five PM.
Yes, because that's when people come, can park all night.
How, how do you feel about that?
I'm fine.
You're fine? They did the five to nine?
We want, it's actually a good problem that we have, because we're trying to build the downtown, we want the business, we want people to go down there. So we're limiting certain amount of time for the ends, because those are businesses that people come in and out. And we're giving them an hour to move around during the day, I, I think it's fine.
So we just moved from eight AM to nine, and that's how you feel, Rich?
I like it, yeah, we, we all like the hour too.
I feel the same way, I read that, I'm reading that.
And Kelly, you?
I'm on one.
Okay, so we have four, we have scuffle four one, so, uh, let's take a five minute recess.
So you're making a motion for five minutes?
Five minute motion.
We haven't, we haven't started the meeting yet.
Yeah, we haven't started yet.
Call a roll. You're making a motion for five minute recess.
We're going to recess, we didn't even start yet, we signed a, a committee as a whole.
I thought we could start after six thirty.
You can, but we're gonna stand in recess, because I need to revise this.
Let's start the meeting and then stand in recess, is what you're saying?
I need to send it to staff.
We have to start the meeting recess.
We have to start the meeting and then stand in recess?
We have to make a motion to adopt the agenda and.
We haven't started the meeting yet.
Okay, go ahead, we haven't started the meeting yet, that's what I'm saying, so you've got five minutes and I can start the meeting at six thirty-five if you want.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
So we don't need a, you don't need a motion?
No, you don't need a motion, that's what I'm saying, we just don't start yet.
Okay.
Just don't start the meeting.
No, I'm going.
We're on the same page. As long as we're on the same page.
Yeah, okay.
We gotta leave the room?
No, no, we're in.
I have a couple questions, so, um, the agenda, the first agenda in March. What do we do on February twenty ninth, do we have a special meeting for something, right? Yeah, we have a special meeting in February twenty ninth. All right, and then March, the, this local law, they were introduced, what, at what meeting?
Uh, March.
Stephanie's would be DJ, sorry.
All right, okay, hopefully with multiple questions.
Okay, oh, if you need her, then I will now ask questions, go for it.
I'm just kidding, I'll do this as Ordinance D to be known as Ordinance Four. Yeah. Yeah, save some time on it. In order, man?
Doesn't matter that those are gonna be skipped.
Yes, all right.
No, this is more.
No, not that. Yeah.
Lot of blessing. God bless you. Don't be sorry, we all sneeze.
I know.
All right, I'm emailing you now, Steph. Don't need to bring.
I can go back and come downstairs.
Distribute it, let's get like ten copies.
I apologize to the public, we're just trying to resolve this issue, appreciate your patience.
And then we'll make a motion to amend the agenda.
We'll make a motion to, okay, shall we get a copy of everybody?
Schedule a public hearing.
Schedule a public hearing, which is already part of this, you're gonna make that March nineteenth, six ten PM? What?
Mark is already gone.
March nineteenth? That's what Tony's got here, is he?
That was, that was last week. Yeah, that's the table one.
This is the table, I apologize. I don't mean to confuse you, we have to wait a year to have that meeting, we'd be in trouble, it's a long wait, it's a long wait. So we've had a, a, a situation downtown that's ongoing where, um, one of the proprietors is having an event on the weekend. And that event on the weekend is taking up all of the parking downtown. Um, and this, this proposal will permit parking downtown on the weekends for unlimited time, right? Except for those spaces where those fifteen minute spots will be open. And those two businesses that are open on the weekends will have access to those fifteen minute spots.
Now, Tony, we can vote on this tonight?
We're gonna just schedule a public hearing.
Schedule a public hearing on it. Okay, so next time the council.
So, you know, once we start the meeting, when we get to ordinance, when we get to Old Business, uh, I think we should make a motion to withdraw the ordinance under Old Business.
Cool, we're, we're talking about Ordinance C, so now we have to start with Ordinance C?
No, we're starting with Ord, Stephanie is distributing Ordinance D right now.
Okay, yeah, 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 okay, yeah.
So B and C are gonna go away now.
Yeah. We're gonna make a motion to.
Make a motion to withdraw Ordinance B, and then later make a motion to withdraw Ordinance C. And then lastly, schedule a public hearing on Ordinance D.
And Ordinance C will have the weekend.
Ordinance D.
Attached to it.
D.
The D, D, D. Ordinance D has that attached to it, weekends. Okay, okay.
So number three is gonna stay as sixty minutes, eight to five.
Correct.
Monday through Friday.
Correct.
So what happens on Saturday and Sunday?
As long as they want those spots. Including tenants and including the people who go to the billiard lounge and play for two hours.
How's that gonna affect the dress shop on the weekend?
Dress shop, they got the fifteen minute spots across the street, or they got the, you know, they've got it in front of their place. Does she open on weekends?
Yes.
Saturday, is that?
Yeah, I'd say that's her busy time.
Okay, are we ready, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one home. Alderman Chris Mars, here. Alderman Holiday?
Here.
Alderman Collins? Alderman Carpenter?
Here.
Alderman Mardasala?
Here.
Uh, can we adopt the agenda, correct?
For the Old Business, no, no, please, I got, please, please be a motion to adopt the agenda, we have one consent resolution and Ordinance D.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Alderman Chris Mars?
Aye.
Alderman Holiday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins? Aye. Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
And Alderman Mardasala?
Aye.
I have no proclamations, communications or presentations this evening, uh, so we'll go to public participation, anybody from the public can come up and talk. State your name and your address, you got a five minute time here.
You've been here for forty minutes and nothing's been accomplished. The reason I'm here is, first of all, I'd like to, probably Chief Agrest is gonna give a presentation on departed police person Peter Belena, who's retired fireman, right?
Yeah, Chief Belena retired, thirty-five years of service with the city.
Yeah, so you're probably gonna say something on that. Why I'm here is not for that. I'm here, there are still people that are putting their garbage out and leaving it out. And that's, I live in the second ward, so that's where something is happening. The last meeting I was here and said that there was limbs hanging over. When you go up Brookside, take a left up story, there's limbs that are hanging over. Nothing's been done about that, and that's a hazard. So, like to see that corrected. And the last thing is, um. I'm just an observer now, I don't have much to say, but, uh, could use all look into that. And, uh, make sure by the next meeting that I get an answer. Is that fair?
I probably will call you before the next meeting, how's that?
You know my number?
I got your card, mother, you gave me your card, unless you change your number. So it's the garbage, the limbs hanging over Brookside, right?
No, limbs, not hanging over Brookside.
Story, Story Street, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm out of tape.
And you're on.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Park, there are, uh, tape falls down and you got a windstorm coming. We have a problem.
Okay, David.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
Very good, very good, David. John R. Chapman, twelve eighteen Austin Street, Mayor, I seen the papers, it's about golf carts, I don't know anything about golf and I don't think the taxpayer should have to foot the bill for golf carts, I think it's about time that the people who golf take care of, of playing golf, I mean, I, I think that this November, uh, we should, on a ballot, we should do, have a decision whether or not the people should maybe wanna sell the golf course or what, should be privately, uh, owned. I mean, it, it, it just, it just doesn't seem right that, uh, we keep on going back to have to worry about the golf, golf course or golf carts and this and this and that, where there's other things that are going on, so I, I, you know, you, you might be surprised, uh, you might, uh, it might, the people might say, hey, let's sell it, if, if we don't, uh, have it go out on a ballot, well, we may never know what, how, how the people really think about this golf course, we, we could probably sell that for millions and millions of dollars and, uh, it might be a good thing for, for the city to do so because a lot of times we seem to get in trouble, uh, with our finances and it, and privately owned, I think, uh, you know, we can wash our hands with the whole situation, I mean, I'm sure that there's other places for people to, to, uh, golf, but, uh, you know, uh, all the rising prices of things, and so I think the city can, uh, do better with having, having to worry about other things and I have a lot of friends that golf, I didn't, never knew, uh, for me, I, I know I could never golf, but I'm, I think it should be up for a ballot this year, November, uh, about the golf courts. Now, vacant lots, Mayor, I bring this up once in a while, uh, I, I think, I think when Ann Thang was mayor, we had like twenty-seven vacant lots. Vacant lots to me isn't it just something that, that you could place, park it like in a winter, should be open year-round and, but some people are buying vacant lots where, where a house was and it was, uh, dilapidated, we knocked it down, but they didn't add anything to it. So, I mean, it's just sitting there, now, uh, that's not right, I mean, they might pay, pay very little in taxes, you gotta give them an incentive to, for them to build on a property by, uh, uh, increasing that, uh, the percentage of taxes. In other words, if they're paying one percent tax now on a vacant lot, maybe it has to go up to two percent or two and a half percent and then maybe they'll say, what the heck with it, they'll either put it up for sale or we can take the, the property back. There might be some younger people who don't even know about that property, who might wanna build a home on that property. So, I mean, it's not right to sell the vacant lot and, and have it just sit there, do nothing. Now, here's another thing I talked to Irene about earlier, uh, every ten years, we, we, they, they come to us, the cable companies, we've had four cable companies in our, in my lifetime, alright, ten-year contracts. The, the last bill I got went up over seventeen dollars for the, for the month, alright? They don't, it seemed to have to explain anything, now, you got the, uh, Public Service Commission and, and, you know, I think we have a right as a city, if they need our approval every ten years, to question, you know, what's going on around here. I heard they're gonna do away with the, with the boxes and stuff and all this streaming and stuff, I don't have a computer at home, I had to give my smartphone away because it was just too smart for me to handle, so I, I just, I just think it's, uh, something that we should have a right to, to question and get the Public Service Commission or ask questions about this, this is a company that does business in the city of Amsterdam and, uh, I think, uh, for me, I don't have a computer, I pay over a hundred eighty dollars a month just to watch TV. Now, most people would look at the sports channels, there's a big thing about the rise of the cost, but I think that they gotta start telling us what the reason why. Sometimes they raise the price up three or four times a year, that's not right, you, you just don't sign the contract and say, oh, and, and then have, uh, you know, you can do anything, what you wanna do, this is a lot of elderly people in this city and, uh, we gotta start, uh, you know, thinking about them and, and the businesses. I even understand that the cable company, a lot of them don't even pay taxes, I don't know if that's true or not and, uh, you know, and that, that's, that's, uh, that's, that's not right either, so, uh, maybe the Public Service Commission, they say if you got a complaint, I think the city has a right, we, uh, uh, to, to question about, you know, about these rising ra, rates and they, they don't, uh, tell us anything about it, you know, so that's how that is. I said, you just say three things, Rich, in five minutes, I like to speak real quick, you know, and get it, get it over with. Being a fact that you're the lone Republican, I'll throw this in, I'll tell you the same thing I told Steve, if the Democrats gang up on you, you know, which is a possibility, bring in the book, uh, War and Peace and, uh, you, it'll give you time to read that while, while the, uh, while the Democrats are doing their thing, alright, take it easy.
Is that it, anyone else? Okay, then we will go on to, uh, this is where we have to do our.
Old business.
You wanna guide me on this one?
Old business?
Old business.
Motion to withdraw?
At this time, I make a motion to withdraw and introduce ordinance D.
Well, no.
Withdraw ordinance B at this time.
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Thank you.
Alderman Martasala?
Oh, I'm sorry, call the discussion.
Discussion.
Call the roll.
Alderman Martasala?
Aye.
Alderman Christomars?
Aye.
Alderman Holiday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
And now that ordinance B has been withdrawn, at this time, I'm making a, I'm making a motion to introduce ordinance D.
I mean, that would be new business.
That would be new business, so just gotta wait a couple minutes, Jimmy, I'm sorry.
Our topic was new business.
We're on old business right now, and then, then we go to new business, we do resolutions.
Okay, okay.
Alright.
It's a form over substance.
So we're now in the new business, uh, first resolution?
Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four dash one eighty-five, resolution of the minutes of the last common council meeting by Alderman Christomars, so move for discussion. Please call the roll, Alderman Christomars?
Aye.
Alderman Holiday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
And Alderman Martasala?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four dash one eighty-six, resolution to enter into contract with Anthem by Alderman Holiday. Whereas the city currently contracts with Humana to provide Medicare Advantage Plan to retirees until May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four at a cost of sixty-six dollars and sixty-eight dollars. Whereas many area hospitals and medical providers have terminated or will be terminated in contracts with Humana and whereas the city believes it is the best interest of enrollees, of our enrollees to change F A P characters and carriers and whereas the city ensures brokers provide pricing information for alternative carriers as follows, Anthem total replacement rates at ninety dollars and ninety-five dollars, C D P H P, partial or total replacement rates at a hundred seventy-one dollars and two hundred twenty-five dollars, M V P declined to offer a proposal. Resolve the mayor's authorized standing contract with Anthem Medicare Preferred P P O Medicare Advantage Group, which will become effective on June first, twenty-twenty-four.
Questions, um, Louise, could you discuss, uh, I, I, I don't know if I'm putting you on the spot, but we had talked about the total dollar difference between this and what we're paying now.
Well, it's very, it's negligible for the current year because it's only effective June, um, gosh.
I, I forget what the number was, but it was, okay, but if we were, thanks, we were, the rate was sixty bucks or?
Sixty-six and it's going up.
Yeah, it's going up to ninety, ninety-five, and we had how many for, I forget how many we had on there, I, I'm sorry, folks, I should've had that number for you, I apologize. But it's a significant, uh.
It's, we have like a couple hundred, it's like a couple hundred retirees that are enrolled.
Yeah, so it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be sixty or seventy thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think that sounds valid.
So it's not, it's not a nip in a bucket, but it's something we have to do because, uh, we promised our retirees that we're gonna provide them with a policy that, that provides them with certain levels of coverage and, uh, they pull, Humana just is not the one any longer, so I did, I did wanna make clear.
And I think it's important to note that our Humana wasn't renewed this year at a rate that was uncharacteristically.
Very low.
Low.
Very low.
It was lower than what we paid last year.
It was lower than we budgeted.
It was very unexpected that they came down, but I think it was part of their exit strategy.
And now we know why.
Yeah, I'm grateful that Lisa came and explained all that from Marshall and Sterling, I think that was very helpful and yeah, I think that probably was part of their exit strategy and all the men's made it really clear that they don't, they won't go through their hoops anymore, so I mean, if that's what they're gonna, if that's what it's gonna, it's gonna be like, then it's a smart decision.
Any other questions?
Okay, call the roll, please.
Uh, no one moved it.
No one moved it.
So moved, go ahead, discussion, we're good.
Yeah.
Okay, call the roll.
Alderman Holiday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
Alderman Martasala?
Aye.
Alderman Christomars?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four dash one eighty-seven, resolution authorizing interfund loans for capital projects by Alderman Collins. Whereas the city of Amsterdam is often required to cover the cost of project expenses that will be subsequently reimbursed by grant funds and whereas the city has been in practice of issuing bond anticipation notes to cover the upfront costs of large grant fund projects and whereas at times the city has adequate cash flow to allow short-term interfund loans as an alternative to issuing bands, especially for lower-class projects. General municipal law allows for interfund loans, if approved, in the same manner as prescribed by general, special or local law for making budgetary transfers between appropriations.
Can you go down to the result?
Thank you, uh, result that the city of Amsterdam authorized the following entries to establish temporary interfund loans. Interfo, interfund loan one, the general fund is temporarily lending four hundred seventy thousand, eight hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents to the capital fund for CHIPS program. Interfund loan two, the general fund is temporarily lending eleven thousand, one hundred five dollars and twenty-seven cents to the capital fund for the Barclay Playground account H point zero-two-zero-zero point two-zero-two-three-zero-six. Interfund loan number three, the water fund is temporarily lending five hundred twenty-one thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars to the capital fund for lead service line replacement, replacement H point zero-two-zero-zero point two-zero-two-three-one-two. Interfund loan four, the general fund is temporarily lending thirty-two thousand, five hundred to the capital fund for the recreation center, H point zero-two-zero-zero point two-zero-two-four-zero-five.
So everybody understand what we're doing here?
Yeah, I'd like to open it up for discussion because we didn't have this for the committee of the whole, um, you know, that, uh, Alderman Collins had, had talked with the controller about it and making sure that, you know, um, this is something we don't, we haven't done very often before because we didn't have a general fund, right? And, uh.
It's a great idea.
Yeah.
It's a great idea.
My, my question is though, is so when we accept these funds, or we're gonna get these funds for CHIPS, for the playgrounds, or things like that, when we accept it, and that resolution is going to say like this to replenish the general fund and then this, like, is that gonna be broken out so that we know that the money, so, so we've tracked that the money has gone back to the general fund or?
Um, I mean, I suppose we could, um, but the, the local law, if I understand it correctly, I mean, it does stipulate that these are, are short-term. Um, typically, I think it's six months to a year, at, at the most, um, we're required to transfer the money, the cash back. Um, but I mean, if you would like an update when the transactions have, have occurred, I'd be happy to provide those. Um, you know, ma, many of these won't even be, they'll, they'll be much shorter than what, you know, we're, you know, you know, much shorter than that.
My question is.
Yeah, what do you think, Irene?
My question was, when, when does the money normally come in, how long does it take?
Well, these are, these are all grant-funded projects and, and they're, you know, the timetable is, it's different depending on the grant.
And depending upon where the money comes from.
Right.
Some come, you know, sixty days, what's the road program like? Reimbursements?
Well, we are reimbursed through, uh, CHIPS program, D O T, every quarter, um, so we're, but, but generally, we still need a, a good chunk of money to start that program with, um, because by the time we make our, our, our a couple of payments to contractor and get that money back, we are a, a million plus into the project already, so you need some backing to begin that work.
We've got, we've got reconstruction board loans that we've been waiting for two years on, you know, that they haven't reimbursed us yet, and so it's, it varies based upon the agency you're dealing with, but we, you know, we do keep track of it.
Any other comments?
It would be nice to have an update since this is kind of the first time, I think, as a board, we're doing it, that'd be great.
I'll include that with the controllers.
Sure, that'd be great, thank you.
So. Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
Alderman Martasala?
Aye.
Alderman Christomars?
Aye.
Alderman Holiday?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four dash one eighty-eight, budget transfer funds to pay community and economic development consultant by Alderman Martasala.
Move, discussion. What this basically is, is we're paying Danielle Welly, Gina DeBarry's line up, that's what we're doing.
Correct.
We're transferring money from her personal line.
Correct.
To contractual.
Correct.
That's what we're doing.
That makes sense. I think it's great that we, uh, that, that Dani is offering to help us out, she wrote a lot of the programs that we're.
She did.
She wrote the applications for a lot of the programs we're utilizing now, so it's great.
One of the, one of the shortest loan cursing we've ever had. But again, I will remind everyone that this is a temporary situation, we are now interviewing personnel, uh, to replace Gina and, um, this will, this will continue until that person is up to, up to speed being able to do what, uh, Danielle's doing now for us, so but we, we do expect to have a higher range, please.
Call the roll.
Alderman Martasala?
Aye.
Alderman Christomars?
Aye.
Alderman Holiday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four dash one eighty-nine, resolution approving the audit by Alderman Collins. Result, the rose documentation of same, who's that's.
Please open for discussion. Alderman.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
Alderman Martasala?
Aye.
Alderman Christomars?
Aye.
Alderman Holiday?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four dash one ninety, consent resolution authorizing contract for C S X Transportation Inc. for engineering services related to facilitate development of the multimodal station and pedestrian connector by Alderman Carpenter.
Tony? This, again, we, this, uh, the multimodal train station, we have got, uh, funding from Congressman Taco up for three-point-five million dollars to do the engineering for that train station. Uh, in order to do anything, uh, involving the railroad track, you need to have a consulting agreement with, uh, C S X in place. They won't even talk to us until we do, you already approved a five-thousand-dollar contract, uh, to, to put them, uh, to, to permit us to do this, this is, this is so that we give them their, uh, this, this is telling us that there's gonna be additional expenses to that contract, it's all funded, but this is why we need to do this now, so that we can move forward with the multimodal train design, we can't do it without their participation. So this is getting them employed.
Call the roll.
Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
Alderman Martasala?
Aye.
Alderman Christomars?
Aye.
Alderman Holiday?
Aye.
And Alderman Collins?
Aye.
We're doing this so that we can move forward with the project, but are we, is there a dollar amount attached to this?
Well, if you read, if you read the agreement, it says that, uh, when they start, it's, there's a twenty, they're, they're anticipating reimbursement expenses will be twenty-nine thousand something dollars and they want us to give them that twenty-nine thousand something dollars ahead of time. Okay, but they, that, we won't give them that money until they started their consulting agreement.
So we'll have a different agreement for that, where we'll state we're gonna pay them twenty-nine thousand or that's.
When that other, when, when this project starts, they're gonna send us, they're gonna say we want this twenty-nine thousand dollars.
They're gonna send it invoice.
Invoice.
Not another, this, I'm not anticipating a subsequent contract, it'll be, it'll be invoice.
So should we add that to this, the dollar amount of this contract?
It's in the contract, well.
Didn't we agree to it already?
It's in the contract, so.
Section three. Previously authorized to.
It's in the agreement.
To incur expenses of five thousand dollars, uh, this is contemplating that the ultimately going to be reimbursements totally twenty-nine thousand dollars, we haven't been invoiced for the twenty-nine thousand dollars.
And it may be more than twenty-nine thousand.
But it's, it's reimbursed.
Yeah. Section three explains it.
Aye. Thank you.
Now, what to the new ordinance, does someone have to.
Uh, so now we're on to C, we're on to C, and C needs to get a draw, please.
Make a motion to withdraw C. Make a motion to withdraw C?
Okay, Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
Alderman Martasala?
Aye.
Alderman Christomars?
Aye.
Alderman Holiday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Now, with respect to ordinance D, I would ask for a motion to schedule a public hearing, please. Now, with respect to ordinance D, I would ask for a motion to schedule a public hearing, please, for, uh, April seventeen.
Motion to schedule a public hearing?
Okay. So, what time?
Five fifty-five. I'm asking. It's a hard number to move, does that make sense?
I know, 'cause the meeting starts at six thirty. But the meeting starts at six thirty.
You wanted to do the public hearing at, here, six thirty?
No, it's six twenty.
No, before it's six thirty, but she said not five fifty-five. I'd ask for a motion for four sixteen and five twenty, public hearing.
Six twenty.
Six twenty.
Six twenty.
Sorry.
Six twenty.
If someone would like to make that move.
What time?
Six twenty. Make a motion for six twenty. P M. Yeah, P M. Thank you, Mike. And six twenty in the morning would've been rough.
Oh, just for the motion. Okay. Alderman Carpenter?
Aye.
Alderman Marcella?
Aye.
Alderman Chris Demars?
Explaining my vote, I just don't think this is a good piece of legislation. I don't think it's holistic. I don't think it's been discussed thoroughly and I don't feel comfortable bringing it to the public. So I don't think we even understand what's in it, so I'm gonna vote no.
Alderman Holliday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
And the one thing we did not do yet, and, uh, we have an engineering report from Mike. I don't wanna apologize, Michael. I know you had to stick around for a minute.
I guess I was gonna get a chance. I, in the interest of time, I'll hit the highlights. Uh, our road program is, is currently out for bid. Bid opening is April twenty-sixth. Uh, wanted to give it a quick, um, five-week bid period to, this time of year to get, uh, as many people looking at as we can. There is, of course, a lot of interest. Uh, uh, as you may recall, or not, uh, every May and October, we do hydrant flushing, uh, in the city. It's crucial to keep the sediment down, keep the dirty water calls down. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna begin the first full week in May this year. Um, what I plan to do, there's always, no matter what we do and no matter how many times it's been done, folks still get a little confused about how it works. Um, so there, we will have normal public information on our website, but I'm gonna include a map, uh, a G I S map this time that not only shows the week, but also the, generally the day-by-day progression of it. Um, I hope it doesn't cause more confusion, but it's really how we would do this kind of work and, um, so, uh, I, I will, I plan to bring that to the next council meeting. If you don't think it's a good idea, I won't post it in that format, but I would suggest we try it. Um, uh, also, our, uh, the D V W carpenters, uh, continue to work at the health course in the land. We've pretty much have, um, completed the new room for, um, a pro shop within the Morton Building, we're calling it, and we'll begin very shortly, uh, with, uh, constructing new bathrooms in the former pro shop.
And also you're gonna be filling that hole.
Yeah, uh, and, and again, we, the reason we have not yet is I still have the Sanders, the, the Sanders home bodies on our dump trucks. And in this case, thank God I do, 'cause we're gonna get more snow again. And I'll take any questions after that.
Thank you. Any questions for Michael?
Yeah.
No, not, not for you, Dave. You can talk to him after the meeting. Um, I do wanna bring up the fact that on April twenty-ninth, uh, twenty-twenty-four, our concessionaire at the golf course, Megan Pedrezak and Megabyte, Megabytes, is gonna be holding, holding an open house for golfers, uh, um, between five-thirty and eight P M. And she's gonna be offering, uh, taste, food tastings of what's gonna be on her menu, appetizers, uh, and desserts in a coffee bar. It's open to people. They, she asks that you R S V P. Uh, if you check our website, you'll see, uh, our Facebook page, you will see a R S V P for...
Is it dating?
It's open to the public, not just to golfers.
April, right, April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four, five-thirty to eight P M.
Okay.
The golf, yeah, 'cause, get that stress for everyone.
What am I forgetting? I'm forgetting something right now, too. I guess it wasn't that important. Is there anything else anyone would like to talk about?
Moment silence for Pete Bellina?
Absolutely. I did post something for Pete on my, on the Facebook page tonight. Um, Pete Bellina was our, uh, a fireman for thirty-five years in our city. He was a, uh, battalion chief when he retired. Um, Pete was very active on our golf commission for twenty-five years. Uh, Pete Bellina was on the O T B commission. He was the Republican, Republican Party Chairman. He was a great guy. I don't know if, if you knew Pete, if you knew him, you liked him. He has, uh, always a smile on his face, always a joke to tell. Uh, just, he was ninety-three years old, ninety-four, right? So he just...
Ninety-three years old and also four years in, or at least four years in the Army, dude.
Four years, he's a veteran in the upper E war. But he also stopped in to see me this past summer, and the same old Pete. I mean, he was ninety-three years old and he, he just had that same personality. Our community is going to miss him. Uh, he's just been one of those guys who's always been willing to help. A great public servant for us, and I'd like to ask you to stand for a moment's silence. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn. Alderman Chris Demars?
Aye.
Alderman Holliday?
Aye.
Alderman Collins?
Aye.
Alderman Carpenter?[1782.54]